Welcome to the first session of 2022. I will call this meeting to order and in doing so, recognize Eric Sittig, the council. Eric, welcome aboard up here.
Thank you.
And also welcome back Brian Wasen to our council. Tracy, could I please have roll call, please?
Absolutely. Harrington, here.
Sittig.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Wasen.
Here.
Everyone is here, thank you. Item three is the approval of the agenda. There are no changes to the agenda. Does anyone have any questions about it or? All right, can I get a motion for approval, please?
So move?
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, say nay? Motion carries. Item four is the consent agenda. Is there, are there any of those items on there that you want to pull off and talk about individually? Okay, could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
And all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? All right. Item five is time reserved for a public comment. If anyone in the audience has something to offer to us that's not on the agenda, now's the time to do that. Don't see anybody rushing to the podium up here. Tracy, do we have anything in writing or other communication to us?
We do not.
Public comment period is closed. Item six, city engineer report. Welcome back Kevin, nice to see you not in a sling.
Yes, yeah, it feels better.
But good.
Just a couple of things. An update on Rancho Way Phase Five, so that's in winter shutdown right now. We've heard that one of the subcontractors, the electrical subcontractor, they may start setting some of the light pole bases soon, like possibly next week. So what that will mean to the traveling public is they'll close those outside lanes again while they do that. It's, it'll just be a temporary closure while they do that work. Other than that, it's going to be shut down until the spring. And the only other thing I have to report on tonight is the Dubuque Street Phase One project. After that was awarded, we sent All American Concrete the notice of award and the contract. And so they have all the contract documents. We just haven't got them back yet. That's all I have unless you have questions for me.
Shortest possible list I think I've heard in a long time. Any questions for Kevin? Thank you. Item seven, city administrator report, Ryan.
Okay, just a reminder that a week from yesterday will be the first time the city recognizes as a day off, Dr. Martin Luther King Day. This was approved in December, so I noted that in the memo. And then follow, the following day, January eighteenth, I know you're all excited about this already. We have our budget work session with our staff that will be here as well, starting at 5:30. We'll have a packet out for that here at the end of the week. So you'll have some entertainment over the weekend as well. Looking ahead to the January twenty-fifth agenda, had a number of conversations since our previous council meeting with Kayla Rome at the food pantry. We'll look to have an agreement on the agenda on the twenty-fifth for that hundred thousand dollars that the council verbally agreed to offer the pantry. And then also the other big item that'll be on that twenty-fifth agenda, and you've heard me talk about this a little bit, and Russ is just ecstatic to present the zoning code amendment or the proposed amendment. If you haven't had an opportunity to catch the Planning and Zoning Commission and take a look at their packet, they, they got a first look at this unanimously, approved it. And like I said, it'll be in front of you with the first reading in two weeks. That's what I have.
Awesome. Any questions for Ryan? Item eight is the mayor's report. I promise you that this will probably be the longest report that I ever give and I won't take this time. Again, the first thing to do though is to appoint a mayor pro tem. I've asked and councillor Wasen has accepted my request for him to be our mayor pro tem. Brian, I'm grateful for your commitment to the city, especially considering the work that you do for all of us in the healthcare system. And thank you for accepting this on our behalf. I wanted to take a few minutes also to express my thank you to the North Liberty community for the support that you all placed in me as mayor. I've been a part of the council now for fourteen years and it's a great honor and pleasure to work on your behalf in this new role. To the community, I pledge to endeavor to learn from you, to listen and to represent you as you would to me. We have a lot to be thankful for as a community and we have so much more that we can do in the future. To our city staff, I look forward to continuing to advocate for your work now in this role as mayor. You all have helped to shape my vision and spirit to support this community and I pledge to provide to you my time and energies to support you. To this council, I look forward to working with you all in the coming years and being a resource to you guys and gals as well as you serve our community. Former Coroville Mayor John Lindell said during his induction into the League of Cities Hall of Fame that being the mayor is like being a coach. You no longer get to get in the game, but instead support and lead the team from the sidelines. It was weird not to affirm my presence in roll call tonight, so I'm gonna have to start getting used to that. So I pledge to support you and your discussions as you work to move the city forward. As a council and a city, we have a lot of discussions over the next four years that will shape the next fifty years of North Liberty's history. And I commit to doing this work alongside of you and I know that we're going to be able to achieve so much of this together. Thank you again for the trust that you've placed in me and I'm excited to continue to be a part of this extraordinary team just at a different seat at the table. I wanted to also thank former mayor Terry Donahue. The last two months, he's been tremendously gracious with his time and support of me and he's helped to make this transition as smooth as it could be. And finally, to you all, thanks for your patience and assistance here over the last ten days. Seeing my face in city hall is a bit disruptive, I, I'm sure it is. It's just the tip of the iceberg and I promise to scale back the questions in the time. So thank you in advance for all of those questions that I'm gonna ask in the weeks ahead. All right, all that stuff aside, Beat the Bitter is coming up and we kind of reserved some of the stuff at the end of the meeting. I wanted to give you a heads up, but I'm also gonna try to recreate the schedule a little bit to give each of you time if you're in a committee to report out to us. It is important, the work that you spend away from council representing the city. So I want to be able to make sure that you are able to talk about those things. One of those things would be Beat the Bitter, for example. Anybody in the audience that's not aware, check out beatthebitter.com. It begins the last weekend of January. There are events that, for example, the ice rink is open right now at Ten Millis Park until March. We have Connected to Tomorrow, that has begun as well. And if you go to the city's website and search Connected to Tomorrow, there are ways for you to fill out a survey online, take a look at the interactive map. We are soliciting input for 2040 and we're planning for that. Next week, next Wednesday, there will be a roundtable in-person discussion. If you're so interested in being there in person for that at the library from six until seven o'clock. And finally, I will be doing training as well. I think I know everything, but I don't. So I'll be doing major training in the next couple of months through the League of Cities as well. All right, I promise I'll stop. Okay. Item nine is the Johnson County Dog Park PAC. You all got information that was sent to us by the, by the PAC and their continued efforts to fundraise. Unfortunately, they weren't able to be here tonight, but they will be in the future. So let that letter and those information details service their proxy right now. But we did get some good news in the mail today, is that right, Ryan?
That is right. They did drop off the thirty thousand dollar check that they mentioned in the letter. So their total contributions now are up to eighty thousand. A hundred and twenty left on their pledge in its entirety, so. And as you can see from the letter, they're, they're pretty excited and anxious about getting that started again and our team will assist as best we can.
Right now, there's probably not a lot of questions that we can answer, but if anybody has anything that they want us to throw their way, let us know. Okay, item ten is the Bowman Property LLC rezoning. And this is the third consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2021-18. An ordinance amending chapter one sixty-seven of the North Liberty Code of Ordinances by amending the use regulations on property located at the northeast corner of West Forever Green Road and South Kansas Avenue located in North Liberty, Iowa to those set forth in the municipal code for the RS4 Single Unit Dwelling District, RS6 Single Unit Dwelling District, RD10 Two-Unit Resident District, RM8 Multi-Unit Residential District, RM12 Multi-Unit Residential District, and C2A Highway Commercial District. Could I have a motion for this third consideration, please?
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. On discussion, does anybody have any questions or things to add to this? All right, hearing none. Tracy, let's finalize that with roll call.
Absolutely. Wasen?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir. All right, item number eleven is what to do about this council vacancy that we have coming up here. Grant, I'm gonna kick it over to you to start off with.
Sure.
Give us some background here.
Sent a letter out a couple of months ago. Hasn't substantially changed. Your, your options are to fill the vacancy. It's gotta happen one way or another. And the, the council can take action. You can choose to hold a special election or you can choose to appoint an individual to fill that spot. And there are details that are set forth in the letter that I provided that's in your packet. You don't have to act tonight if you don't want to, but you can. And the way to do that is by, by motion. Just make a motion saying, I want to. I move that we appoint an individual. You don't have to name who it is tonight if you wanted to. Or if you, I move that we want to hold a special election to fill the vacancy. Once that's seconded and affirmed by a majority of the, of the quorum here, we notify the Johnson County Auditor's Office and the ball is, is rolling with them. One thing I would note, and I'll go on, I'll try to keep this relatively brief. I was asked about whether we could, the cost and the precincts that are involved in, in this sort of thing. The more precincts we have, the, for an election, the more it costs because we pay for the, the auditor's office and the county workers to, to, to fill those things. That decision is made by the county auditor. But I, in speaking with the auditor's office, they are, they are receptive to the idea of having a voting center, which we've had in the past where we had one, one spot for, for these special elections. It's typically held at the community center or at the library, depending on availability. That's one way to hold, to cut down on costs. And they will consider a request if we, if we make such a request. Their recommendation however was to have all seven precincts, you know, have, have an election with all seven precincts so as to eliminate confusion. I don't know whether or not it's more or less confusing to have, send people to precincts that this body just created a couple of weeks ago, right? And that's matter for your, your good judgment to, to decide. Either way, the, the auditor's office is willing to work with us. They, they ultimately have the discretion to decide how they want to do it, but would certainly take into account what our preferences are. If this body does not act for sixty days, then they will go ahead and hold an election for us. And that's it. Have any answer to any? Yeah.
That's sixty days from the first or the second or the third or?
It's sixty days from the vacancy. From, so, so yes, from the third. March fourth, I think. I'll have to figure, I'll do the math, but.
I normally voice up right away when asked if I'm going to. I'm gonna resist now. I can participate in a conversation with you guys and I'll continue to do so, but this is ultimately gonna be something that I do not get to vote on. So with that, I'm gonna let you guys take off. What do you guys want to do? Yes, sir.
So since it's two years, my preference would be to have an election. It's just, that's a long time to just appoint somebody. However, the way the coronavirus stuff is rolling through the community, I would prefer that we end up having an election probably in March. Just hopefully we'll be able to get through some of this. We're predicting, you know, that we'll probably by March should be maybe a little better shape as far as that. And so is there anything we need to do separately to make sure that, you know, is there any trigger? If we say today we want to do an election, then it triggers some automatic timeframe? Or can we, or do we need to like not do anything today until it's, you know, closer to where?
Well, that's a great question, councilor. So the, they are required, the auditor's office is required to hold an election as soon as is practical, but not sooner than thirty-two days after this body makes that decision. So the easiest way to delay, if you want to do, is not to make a decision tonight or to table this decision until a later date. You could also have a motion, I think it would be fair to have a motion to say, let's call for an election to, with the clock or vacancy to begin at a later time, but not, no later than the timeframe of our, just, you know, I, we can, we can work on that. And, and I don't think, as long as you can do nothing for sixty days, I think you can operate within that timeframe safely. So I, I think the way we would want to form the motion would be to stop short of making a full decision if you don't want it to happen on February fifteenth. The, the, my understanding is that the auditor's office is ready to go for an election on February fifteenth if this body acts tonight. Is that responsive, councilor? Yep.
I understand the, the desire to have the people choose. I, I guess my concern is that we had four people run for three seats, three open seats in November, two months ago. We don't have people chomping at the bit right now to run for office. And if, if someone had, if someone else had filed papers, I wouldn't be here because I waited until the very end because I didn't want to stand in anyone else's way. And I think, I, I just don't see why we would spend money on, on an election now when we can appoint someone and have a full, full council next, next meeting, potentially, if we can move that quickly. And, and the people can always file petition to, to force us to have an election and we have a full council until that happens.
The last time we had like, then didn't we have like seven people run for that special election?
Yeah.
It was kind of weird.
So councillor Harrington and I were in that group.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it seems, it is very weird that it seems the special elections definitely pull out, bring out a number of people. And with it being two years, it ideally makes sense to have an election. However, I also feel that appointing someone would definitely get us a, a full council much quicker in the process if, if we went that way, so.
And as part of that, I guess I question staff whether there are. It's probably been a while since, since North Liberty has appointed anyone, but are there any established ways of going about that? Would we just look at, at applications like we would with commissions and things like that? Or does anyone have any recommendations of how we would go about doing that?
I can speak to the last time we did this. We, you, you guys can too. We, I think it was an interesting process. We did take applications and then I think we had them all sit right in front of the group here. And they were peppered with questions and after that, a decision was made. I'm not sure that was the, maybe the best approach. It seemed a little awkward, but maybe, maybe it's awkward regardless, I don't know.
Right.
But we would want to put a little more thought into that, I think, before we.
And I, I think the last time we did this was to appoint Brent. And the reason that his was an easy appointment was that there were a couple of things. There was only five months or so until the election.
Really short, yeah.
It was really short.
And he had come in, what, eleven votes shy of Rakeeshia in the special election? And then it wasn't even close after that. So those two circumstances, I think, warranted us to, to appoint because he could get right to work and be up here with us and it was in that short window of time.
In a two-year window, it would make sense to have someone run for a special election.
I feel that same way too. I'm, I'm of, I'm of the, of the opinion that an election would be best serving of the community in, in this time period.
So would, sorry, mayor.
That's okay.
Would we be able to get a straight answer from the auditor's office on whether they would be, they would affirm that they would do a voting center versus voting districts? Because last time we talked about this, it seemed that they were, they flip flopped on that.
They have changed their mind. The, the initial discussion I had with the deputy auditor, I'm sorry, is it, if I can, I'm sure, was that they were originally not receptive to the idea of having a voting center and I, I asked them to reconsider based on feedback from, that I received from this body. And then I was informed. This is from our deputy auditor of elections that she talked to Travis Wipert and we are fine doing vote centers for the special election. We have not decided if we need more than one such center, but I wanted to keep you posted.
Excellent.
So is that, I mean, it's in writing.
Yeah, for sure.
They can certainly change their mind, but I, I think it's reasonable to rely on that.
No, and they, they, they're a trustworthy body. Don't get me wrong. I trust Travis for sure. But I, there, there was just competing from, from the last time. And with that cost, that, that certainly plays into that.
This has changed since last, since last you and I spoke about this, yes.
I appreciate you reaching out and, and asking about that. You know, this week personally for me, I've been on both sides, right? So I've been appointed, I've ran for a full term. And, you know, I, I've, I guess I have been in favor of both. This week, reaching out to folks on my campaign page, asking, you know, very unscientifically for a poll and just getting feedback. All of the feedback I received was in favor of appointment due to, and I, I think the majority of those folks saw that there was not a high level of interest in this last term. They saw the, the potential cost. Now, if this, I think the auditor willing to work on a voting center makes a big difference in that cost. Now, if I'm able to go out and share that new information and, you know, have, have folks that had the replies Now, if I'm able to go out and share that new information and, you know, have, have folks that had the, the replies back say, you know, it's not going to cost $15,000 based off of this, the auditor estimate is this and it's much lower. Maybe they would change their mind. You know, so personally, I, I like the idea of a special election. But representing the folks that reached out to me, uh, they all said appointment and they would rather have the appointment. And that's, that's my job is, is to represent them. So, um, I guess for me, I'd almost rather wait and see if we have another cost estimate if we're going to do a voting center versus a, a, a full special election with, with eight centers. Get that information out and for, for me, just personally for, for more feedback. So how's that for around about?
The only, the only feedback that I'd offer to you is to, are you, are you kind of providing some guidance on like how you're leaning? When you're asking this poll, because I think
Nope.
You ask the question out loud, people are going to say, I don't want to spend money. But there are different consequences for both of those things. So however you pose that question, I think will also be rather important for the, the answers that you get.
Agreed.
So, Brian?
So if we have an election and nobody runs?
Yes. Good question.
What happens?
Yeah.
I will be delighted to research that again. I don't, I don't have an answer for that off, uh, uh, from the.
Wouldn't the top write in good?
Yeah, I think so.
That would be my.
Go right in?
Yeah, there's, I mean, you, you got a ballot, people voted.
That's, that's, that was the answer I was likely to give, yeah. I'll, I will, I will verify that, but I think Mr. Sidig is correct.
But that, that brings me back to Councilor Sidig's point. If we appoint some, anyone, any one individual in the community that is, is strongly opposed and wants to see a special election can push that with a petition and then off we go. Yes, sir.
I, I would just note that we've had a significant uptick in, in participation in recent elections. And so, uh, I think we would have something, a petition requires something like more than 200 signatures. Now, 203, uh, when your appointment was, uh, was, it was 76.
Yeah.
Just to give you a sense of, of how that dynamic has changed.
Okay.
So FYI, um, that's, that's one difference in the process from now, but from between now and 2019.
So required signatures were 200 and?
203 required signatures. And that's because of, it's based on the number of, of people that participate in the, in the election.
Okay.
And, and it's, it's all based off of a, a formula by statute. That's, that's the number of how many signatures a, a petition would need to be valid.
And for some reference, when Terry was appointed mayor by this body, the petition limit was 50 signatures. So voter turnout prior to that was even lower. So, um, we don't have a precedent for people not filing for a special election. I think it's just the opposite and I think you made a, an astute observation there. For whatever reason during a special election, there's just not as much interest in running. But when there's a special election, uh, even if it's for one seat, which has been the case, you'll get a number of people that will really strongly be interested in that, so.
I think some of that is, is it's, 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 it's a lesser commitment. They can come in, try out, try it for a couple of years and if they don't, they can say, thanks, I had my, I had my time and not have a four year, which, you know, again, we've seen that unfortunately, we've seen a higher rate of turnover in the last few years here. And, you know, I know a number of people have expressed how difficult that has been on the body and it's hard to get work done. We certainly don't want that either.
So I'll just leave one last, uh, one last thought is we're hoping to do a, a planning session with this group in March, towards the end of March, if I.
It's March 23rd.
23rd. While the four of you with expert guidance can get through the budgeting process just fine, I, I, I do not want to go into a planning session if we can get this knocked out March 23rd without a full body. So if we do wait a set, if we do wait a meeting to set the election, I think we'll still be fine, but I would really encourage us to have a, a full council prior to that March 23rd timeframe.
So does this require us to make a motion to hold off on, or we don't have to do anything right now?
Counsel doesn't have to do anything right now. You, you act by way of motion, right?
Would you feel comfortable trying to kind of take the pulse of, on your, thinking it? And we talk about it next time.
For next meeting? Yeah, for sure. And I, you know, I, um, you know, I know all of you are engaged as well. And to be able to bring that feedback back, you know, I, I don't just, I don't just want the, the public record stating the folks that are getting back to me, you know, I, you know, that'll give us all time to put the word out and get some feelers out. You know, I know our neighborhood ambassadors might be a good contact to, you know, get feedback from the different areas of the community, which would give us time to do that.
And by then you would be able to follow up and confirm whether or not we will have.
With an estimate. Sorry, Mayor.
Oh, no, go ahead.
With an estimated cost?
Yeah.
Yes, um, and just for what, what it's worth right now, what our cost center or the, the cost for one voting center last time was right around $3,000. And they think they might need one or two. The cost for up to seven precincts, uh, they quoted between 10 and $15,000. So some, somewhere between 3 and $15,000 depending on what your, uh, what their windows. But I, I, I will of course find out about that. I've got the email drafted and ready to send. And we'll update you all accordingly once I hear back.
And Grant, could you clarify one, uh, one more time for us? How many days notice does this body need to, uh, what's the timing like? If we were to act tonight, which we're not going to, it sounds like we could set the election as soon as February.
So, yeah, uh, you would call for a special election and then, and then make the, make the decision to do so. Then we scramble behind the scenes, uh, which is just making a phone call to the Auditor's Office. They get that ball rolling, they're aware of what they need to do. And they will do that, uh, 32, no sooner than 32 days after this body makes that decision.
Okay.
Right? But pretty quickly thereafter is my, is my understanding.
Okay. Mayor, can I ask one more question?
Yeah, sure.
Let's, let's say that it were, uh, we were to agree on appointment. Is, can it be nominations from council of folks? Can it be a mixture of folks who apply, nominations from council? Does it have to be one where, uh, or the other?
To my knowledge, there's no precedence on, on what we do. It's been uncomfortable.
Right.
No matter which way we go.
Right? Okay.
You folks can dictate what, how you want the process to go and we'll implement it for you.
Right.
Thank you.
Can, can we also find out, Grant? What, what dates we have available for elections if we're going to look at that? Just so we have a full slate of the dates that, because we do have to, to set a date when we choose to have an election, don't we?
Uh, we have to, uh, the election has to take place as soon as is practical, which is the first Tuesday, which is more than 32 days after the decision to hold a special election. So in, if, that were happening today, uh, because, uh, 30 days after September, that puts us at, 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 at February 15th. And that will give, we'll get a different, a different answer if we make that decision on the January 25th meeting. Right? That I'll, I'd have to look at the math, but it's first Tuesday after 32 days have passed. And that's, that's, that's what the, uh, the code requires. So, once this body makes that decision, that ball is rolling. If the body does not make that decision for 60 days, then it will be made for it, so.
So it looks like we have at least one meeting, possibly two meetings where we could, you know, delay this decision. Still likely get a vote in if it's, if it's determined to go to a special election so that that person could be voted on as, by the March, by March 15th voting timeframe. So that they can be present and participate in our planning session on March 23rd.
And Mayor, I appreciate that and respect that. I think that's, that's wise. So thank you for that.
I agree.
So do we want to, are we talking the 25th to talk, to finalize this or the 18th? Next week, next week.
The 25th.
Alright, so the next regular.
Yeah.
And we still have enough time then and?
Then I'll, then I'll get us in the.
Okay. Alright, so we agree to do nothing? Alright, good deal.
For those out there listening, they can make up their mind if they want to run. And we strongly encourage.
Yeah, and provide feedback too for that matter. Okay. Alright, item 12 is the Urban Renewal Plan Amendment. And item A is a public hearing on proposal to enter into a general obligation urban renewal loan agreement. And now is the time to, um, anyone with comments in regards to our GO urban renewal loan agreement. Seeing none. I'll close the public hearing. Item 12B is Resolution Number 2022 dash 01, first resolution of the year. A resolution taking additional action on proposal to enter into a general obligation urban renewable, renewal loan agreement. Could I please have a motion?
It's been moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Anyone have any questions that are yet unanswered? Alright, Grant, before we take some votes here, I meant to do this earlier in the evening. Could you give us a heads up on how many votes are required for this if there's anyone that's thinking they might not want to support this?
Sure, uh, so your resolutions, ordinances, amendments are going to require a majority of the, of all members of the council. So that's going to be three votes. And all, that's going to be my shortest answer of the night.
That was awesome. Alright. With that, Tracy, could you take roll call, please?
Harrington?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Sidig?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Item 13 is green conditional use in the county. And item A is Resolution Number 2022 dash 02. A resolution regarding the review of the green conditional use application, Johnson County, Iowa. And, uh, Russ, I'm going to ask you to get us down the road on this one.
Sure, uh, so this is a, this was approved previously for a five-year period. Uh, this is within our area that you can provide an opinion on. Uh, this is a little bit further north of the city limits. I don't expect city growth to occur there within the next five years. So I, I've been by the property, I hadn't even noticed it was there. Uh, there is some outdoor storage with materials, um, but again, I didn't see it when I went by. The hours of operation were very minor, but they, they basically worked during the day. And then this is kind of an operation that works for a few hours during the evening and then partially on the weekends. So, um, staff doesn't have an issue with it. We recommend that you recommend to the, uh, to the county that it be approved again with the sunset for five years and it be unique only to the property owner.
Terrific, yeah, pretty straightforward. Does anyone have any questions?
Has there, has there been any complaints of noise or anything for, that you know from the county?
No, not at all. This was just simply that the five-year time period was expiring and so they just required him to re-up.
Did I do a motion?
We do not have a motion.
Alright, could I have a motion for Resolution 2022 dash 02, please?
Make that motion.
Russ, do you need anything specific in that motion other than?
I believe so.
Okay.
Conditions are in the resolution, so we're good.
Alright, awesome, thank you. Any other discussion or questions?
Seems like a good family business.
Yeah, it's pretty cool.
Sir, a second.
Oh, I'll second.
Thanks Attorney. Alright, Tracy, I'll take roll call, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Sidig?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 14 is the Shared Power Agreement and this is Resolution Number 2022 dash 03. A resolution approving the agreement regarding electrical backfeed hazards between the City of North Liberty and South Slope Cooperative Telephone Company. Ryan, could you give us just a quick background on this one?
So this is, I think most of you know, we're, we, we have a joint site with South Slope at our new lift station west of the interstate, just off of Jasper. And so we have our lift station there and they have a fiber communications building out there. Well, uh, as I think I noted in my memo, they, they are, they fell victim to the material delays and shortages and they have a transformer that's 40 weeks out. This was a few weeks ago, or a month or better ago. So that, and they need some temporary power, uh, not a whole lot of capacity that they need. So this, uh, they've worked directly with Drew, uh, at the wastewater who, who manages the lift station as well as Kevin and, and some other electrical engineers. And we're recommending approval to, to get them, uh, through until their transformer comes in. And of course, they've agreed to pay all costs associated with this, including any power that's used out there.
Could I get a motion for this resolution, please?
That move. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Questions for Ryan or those that weren't answered in the discussion, yes?
So do we have to undo something in the future or is it, it'll just be?
Yeah, they'll, as I understand it, and Kevin, if you know more than I do, certainly jump me, but as I under, jump in. As I understand it, um, yeah, they'll have to disconnect what they're putting in now, which again is their costs, so.
Any other questions? Okay, Tracy, could I roll call on that one, please?
Sidig?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries. Look at us, almost done with our agenda. Item 15 is old business. Anybody have anything here from 2021 that they want to discuss? Brent's got a big old smile on his face. He wants to forget about it.
Let's be done with that.
Okay, alright, let's do that. Item 16 is new business and I'll just jump in here first and, um, say I sent you guys an email. It used to be that, um, messages about the I-380 intersection changes were forwarded to all of you. Are you getting them all on your own? Alright, so I've stopped sending those things out, uh, to you. I will do my best if you all can do your best as well. Anything calendar related that, if you see a ribbon cutting, um, share it with council. I try, I think I catch most things, but then I recognize that I don't. So, um, you see those things, just let others know, uh, let me know, we'll pass that on, uh, out there. Does anybody else have anything under the new business category?
I just want to say in recognition of Dr. Martin King, they, the library will be hosting, um, an event, a storytime and an opportunity to put together hygiene and literacy kits. Um, and there is also a job fair on Saturday as well. Just to promote those because I know a lot of businesses are struggling with hiring and just getting people in. So if anyone is looking for a job or, you know, looking for ways to, um, give back to the community during these next few weeks and, and days that they have opportunities. And then to start going to beat the bitter.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, there's a lot going on in these next few weeks that you might not think is going on, so. Anything else?
You, you, you got your mayor report to do this, but, um, I, I just wanted to say thank you to everyone up here and, um, Ryan and, um, the rest of the staff for, for the warm welcome I received. And especially Ryan spent, what, six hours with me in December to, to bring me up to speed on, on projects, take me around all the, the facilities. And I, I appreciate that time, the time of the, the, um, department heads of, to spend time with me and, and get to, get to know me a little bit so I could get to know them, so. Thank you to everyone.
Anything else? Alright, let's bring this meeting to an end. Thank you all.